Good morning, Hannah is on the line.
Hannah is online.
Yeah, so I'll probably tell her that she's not coming.
Okay, can you text Hannah and let her know that Hannah's on? She'll be quite for her.
Good morning. Can someone say hi so we can see how loud you are?
Hello.
Okay, I think that's okay. That's fine. Thank you. It's too loud. We'll just thank you. Okay. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
There you go. We're all together. I think before we get started with Brooke, I want to give one reminder. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
We have, we have a very full agenda, so I just want to give kind of an early reminder of let's please try and pay attention to the times as much as possible. I don't want to cut anything short, but I think with, with so much on the agenda, let's just try to be mindful of that today also. And now, Brooke, do you want to go ahead and get kicked off with the work session? That'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So this morning, we're going to do the early literacy. And this is under the priority of eliminating achievement gaps. So Amy, I know we have Amy and Brad. I see Amy. Oh, I see Brad there too. Okay.
Good morning. So I'm just going to get us started off. And then we actually, we have Brad Niebling, who is the Bureau Chief for Learner Strategies and Supports, and Janelle Brandhorst, who's talked to you before as well. She's an administrative consultant in school improvement. And then Kathy Birch, who is an administrative consultant in learner strategies and supports. And they're going to go through a presentation for you, but it's the kind of presentation where you can ask questions anytime. We just wanted to have some visuals to show you some data and show you the things that we're working on in literacy. We tried to focus this presentation on a couple of things. One is we want to let the board know kind of the things that we've worked on literacy up to this point and how the state was doing. But we also understand that the real focus right now is on potential learning loss from the pandemic. And that learning loss is real. And then what we're seeing for that learning loss and how it's influencing groups of kids, especially those who were already seeing achievement gaps and are at risk, and what we're doing about it is the really important part, right? So they're going to go through that material and, you know, I'll jump in whenever that's necessary, but feel free to also ask questions. That's what we're here for. So I don't know who's starting. I think Brad's starting, going to talk a little bit about how this aligns with the board goals.
Yep, I'll go ahead and start. And maybe if I could do a screen share, will it let me? Yes, it will. All right. So Janelle and Kathy, I'll start here with screen share. And I can either advance slides for us or if we want to swap out when it's everybody else's turn, we can do that too. So good morning, everybody. As Amy said, I'm Brad Niebling. I've been at board meetings before and worked with several of you before as well, so it's good to see you again. And we really appreciate the opportunity to share some of the work that we've been doing around third grade literacy. And I'm just going to go through a couple of things and then do some stage setting for us. So before I get into some of the stage setting, just wanted to orient ourselves to your board goals. Now, I recognize today is a big day because you're going to be voting on updated and new board goals and priorities. So we wanted to make some connections both to the current ones and the work that you have been doing as a board and to the, the future ones as well. So what I've got here are the current board priorities and goals. And this work really does sit most squarely in eliminating achievement gaps when we think about the board's current goals. And making sure that we've got equity and opportunity to learn what's in Iowa's academic standards for all students and that we make sure that we are providing differentiated learning opportunities and that teachers have the support that they need to do the work that they need to do to support those diverse learning needs. The work also in the context of your current board goals does align really well with Iowa's academic standards work that you've been doing because fundamentally, this work is about making sure students are learning Iowa's academic standards. But as we're looking forward and the proposed goals that you've, and priority areas that you've got moving forward, that eliminating achievement gaps work is still there in your proposed priorities and goals. And so this work again, still sits squarely in where you're going with that. And in terms of ensuring equity in education, the one I really want to draw attention to here is, as we're making connections, is that fourth goal around developing partnerships around underserved students and families. This work is fundamentally about the collaborative work that's necessary, not just amongst the educators in the school, working with kids day in and day out, but those community and family partnerships as well. So we're going to touch on different pieces of that. But what we really want to emphasize here is the, the work that we're going to be talking about in third grade literacy is about promoting equity for all students in, in closing achievement gaps. So as we get into this a little bit, we're going to be talking about some of the data and what that looks like. And there are some interesting things in these data that we didn't necessarily expect. So we're processing some of that as well. Some of the things we really did expect, unfortunately. So we're going to go through that and then talk about our response. And something to keep in mind here, I think, is, is you're listening and asking your questions and we can have the conversation about what we've got going here. What we've really worked to do is try to be nimble to respond to what's been going on since March in our schools from a Department of Education perspective, knowing that there are a lot of other pieces that need to fall into place for the, the things that we're putting out there to be implemented. So we've actually been able to build on the work that we were doing prior to March and put it very, into a very specific context in terms of responding to the pandemic and everything that's come along with that. So we want to make sure that we're connecting the, to what we've done with things like the Every Student Succeeds Act and how that's translated into what we're doing with schools around accelerating learning. So with that, I think what I will do is stop talking and transition us to Janelle Brandhorst. Janelle, do you want to swap out the screen share or do you want me to advance slides?
Let's swap out.
Got it. Let me stop sharing. It should be good for you to share now.
Alrighty. Can everyone see my slide that says healthy indicator data?
Yes.
Yep, great. So I'm Janelle Brandhorst from the Bureau of School Improvement. It's nice to be with you all this morning. I'm going to start by sharing some of our data. Just to get you grounded a little bit in where we're at, kind of the work that we've been doing over the past, oh, five or six years probably is, is kind of displayed in this model of our conceptual areas. So our work is really ensuring student success through a framework of MTSS and supporting that through differentiated accountability. And the clusters in this graphic are kind of the areas, the conceptually called the conceptual areas of the work that we're doing. And each of these conceptual areas has multiple healthy indicators that we're using to kind of track our progress at the system level in ensuring that our, we're doing the right, we're doing the right work, that we at the department are providing districts and schools the support that they need. So today, we're going to share data with you about two of the healthy indicators. So the first one is we'll look at the number and percent of learners that are screened with a valid and reliable literacy assessment for learners in grades kindergarten through third. And so that's in our assessment system conceptual area. And the second healthy indicator is looking at the percent of students that are meeting benchmark on those literacy screening assessments. And that one is in our universal instruction conceptual area. All right. So the first healthy indicator again is looking at the percent of learners that are screened with a valid and reliable assessment. Our goal for this healthy indicator is that 95% of students are screened in literacy, especially in grades kindergarten through three. The tiers of support or the, you know, that we look at at the department are 0 to 79% student screens would be intensive. So a district or a school might need intensive support if they're screening 79% or less of their students. Supplemental support would be 80 to 94% of students. And universal support would be 95 to 100% of students. So you can see the light blue bars are the percent of students that we were able to screen last fall. So fall of 2019. And the dark blue bars are the percent of students across grades that we were able to see were being screened this fall. So we're really pleased with the data in this healthy indicator. We didn't see a big drop in the percent of students that were screened this fall, even though we know that schools and districts had lots of different learning models that were happening in the fall with some students learning remotely and some students learning in person. So across grade levels, 98% of students were screened last fall and 97% of students were screened this fall. And again, like Brad and Amy mentioned, feel free to ask me any questions as you have them, as we go through the data. All right. So our next healthy indicator then is the percent of learners that are at or above benchmark on those screening assessments. Our goal for this is 80%. So we'd like to see that 80% of students are meeting benchmark on the literacy screening assessments. Our tiers of support are listed here again. Intensive support would be 0 to 59% of students meeting benchmark. Supplemental, 60 to 79%. And universal, 80 to 100% of students meeting benchmark. So if we look at this data, again, the light blue bars are last fall. We were, had 74%, or sorry, excuse me, 64% to 72% of students across grade levels that were meeting benchmarks. So we were in the supplemental range of support for most districts and schools. And you can see this fall with the dark blue bars, we are at 47% to 67% of students that were meeting benchmark. So we're more in the intensive to supplemental range for some grade levels. You can see that first grade and second grade specifically seem to be showing possibly more of the learning loss than kindergarten and third grade as we look at this data. All right. And then we wanted to look at the students that were meeting benchmark across different student populations. So there's a lot of information on this chart, but I think it's, it's pretty easy to see once you, once you kind of walk through it. There are different student populations across the bottom. So the first grouping of bars is looking at all students in the state in grades kindergarten through third grade. Then we're looking at students across different race and ethnicity categories. And then finally, towards the end, English learner students, students that are on free and reduced price lunch, and students with IEPs. So the light blue bars are the percent of students last fall and fall of 2019 that were meeting benchmark or at or above benchmark. And the dark blue bars are the, that same percentage for this fall of 2021. And then the gray bars just show you really quickly and easily what the difference is between last fall and this, this fall. So for example, last fall with all students, 68% were meeting benchmark. This fall, 58% were meeting benchmark. And that means a 10% difference in the percent of students that were meeting benchmark. So I'll give you a moment to look across the different subgroups. But my general takeaway from this chart is that we don't see lots of, lots of fluctuation across different subgroups. And so we are definitely seeing learning loss from fall of 2019 to fall of 2020, but it doesn't appear that that learning loss was specifically exacerbated for any particular student population.
Do you mind if I jump in and, and just say something here, Janelle?
Sure.
So Janelle and I were looking at this slide yesterday, quite a bit actually. Because one of the things that I have been saying a lot publicly, and I think is still true, is that learning loss exacerbates gaps that already exist for student populations that, that have a gap. And so in Iowa, that has always been a pretty persistent, hard to move gap for English learners, for kids of color, and for kids with IEPs. And when you look at this, you see that by and large, the learning loss has been sort of even across all of our, our groups of kids that we typically look at. That doesn't mean that it's not going to be exacerbated for any of these groups. But it can start this way. What happens with achievement gaps is it's harder for those groups of kids who have a gap to ever close the gap and catch up. And so the thing that we need to take away from this isn't that this is equitable in any way, is that this could get much worse for groups who are already at risk or disadvantaged. And so we need to pay attention to making sure that we close those before they do get any worse than they already are. And we still have the work to do to close them too. So Janelle and I just spent some time talking about what this really means for us as a system. And I just, I wanted to make sure that you're aware that, you know, we were thinking through this.
John has a question quick. Hold on.
Question for you, Amy, with the, I get the table. Is there another table that shows the percent loss as far as the percent total? So for example, with the, with the white students, it's 11% difference between last year and this year. But if you put that on a percent of loss in regards to the 73%, your percent changes are going to be a lot different. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So what they-
Right now, you're just, right now, you're just subtracting the averages.
Yep.
But if you would actually take the 11% loss, like for white students and divide that by the 73%, you're going to get a different percent loss. And if you would, for example, with the, with the black students, whether it was 10% loss, but 10% of 48% is going to be a lot larger number than just average scores.
Yeah. And I think that the way we probably want to do that is even something so that we don't end up taking percents of percents too much and making it harder to interpret. But I totally know what you're getting at though, is that we probably want to look at the number of kids that are actually moving from proficiency to non-proficiency and understand where they're actually moving to. Because, but we can make, yes, a, a couple of more charts that are actually going to dig into this more. Because really what's happening is, so for white students, for Asian students, their setback here is a totally different setback from where you're seeing kids with IEPs get setback too. And so I think that we can illustrate that in different ways.
Amy, this is Betty, or whoever wants to answer it. And maybe it's more of a comment than a question, but you know, I think it's a bit troubling that even last year, not very many of the groups were even close to our 80% benchmark. And that I find really, really troubling and something that I think we need to spend a lot of time and energy and resources on trying to figure out what the steps are to remedy that. These numbers haven't changed much over the last, when I first started getting into early childhood stuff about maybe eight years ago, these numbers have not significantly increased, have they? I mean, I remember talking about some groups in Marshalltown being at 50% benchmark back then, and I don't see a lot of changes in that. So what are we doing and what can we do and what should we do?
Yeah. So two things. I'm going to address the change over time and then I'm going to let Kathy actually talk about what we're doing. So the change over time has been, since we really started working hard on this in the state, not that we haven't worked hard always, but when we came together with the AEAs and the districts and said, we are all going to do these things, then it's going to affect literacy, we did make movement as a system. It's hard to see when you look at the system numbers, but if you look at what some of our districts have done, they are doing double-digit growth, right? And there's about two-thirds of our districts who are really getting growth and about one-third of our districts who are not seeing that growth. But it's system change, so it's hard. And so when you look at the graph that's over time, you're going to see we are making steady incremental growth. And when we've talked with the board about this before, we've seen like a 4% upward change over time. Sometimes a little higher, sometimes it goes a little lower. But that's actually good growth for these metrics, right? The problem is that we've had this setback and we need to figure out how to overcome that and continue to move forward as a system. So we have made changes. The issue is going to be that this is going to hurt and we all have to double down and continue to move forward.
Just offer a comment if I might. You know, I've heard it said that up to third grade, we're learning to read and after third grade, we're reading to learn. So these numbers really scare the heck out of me. And I think probably one of the, the greatest indicators of success, I think you can show this if you have the data, is, is my success at third grade reading pretty much determines how I'm going to do all the way up through high school. Whether I'm going to graduate, whether I'm going to be academically successful or not. So these numbers are just scarier than heck because I don't know how you make that up. And, and we, do we have additional resources that we can use to help make that up? Because I don't, again, if, if that predictor is true, then we've got a heck of a county coming in a few years. And it's incredibly scary.
I, I completely agree with you. Janelle, do you mind putting the trend line up quick? I know it's jumping ahead, but there we go. So I just wanted to, so many of you haven't actually been on the board since 2015, but some of you have. So in, when we really started measuring this, these particular metrics in 2015, and by the way, this is the first time that we had statewide data on these particular metrics. And it has been essential to teachers in classrooms being able to measure these things on a frequent basis and have this kind of knowledge. And it has been essential to us as a system with our AEA partners, being able to understand who needs the most help. And so we can go out and help them. And that is exactly what we've done. But you can see that we are experiencing like increases and then we'll get a little bump down and then we'll get a bump up and a bump down. There was a, a big decrease where we had some benchmarks that got updated. And so we had some adjustment. And then you see what happens with the pandemic. So I guess what I, the message that I want to convey to the board is these numbers have always scared the heck out of us too, that this is where we're, we're seeing early literacy because it is so critical. So that's why we, we've put so many resources into it. And we felt good about seeing these, this trend generally go from about here to up in this area. And we know how to, how to do this work. So Kathy's going to talk a little bit about that. But we want you to be aware that the learning loss is, is a real thing that we're going to need to overcome as a state and commit the resources to.
Amy, I have a question. Can you explain why these are going down before the pandemic hit? And then it was exacerbated by the pandemic?
Yeah. So there's a couple of reasons that you see the decrease here. So one thing is benchmarks were updated by the creator of these assessments. And sometimes when, and so what they do is they're always taking in data to, from everybody who uses their assessments to see if the benchmarks that they are setting for what they call on track to be proficient are accurate or if they need to adjust them. And so sometimes when they find out they needed to do a reset for their benchmarks, what they determine is that benchmark's a little too high. Sometimes it's a little too low. Occasionally, it'll be a relatively large shift for some grades, right? So if you see a larger change for certain grades when you, when the benchmarks are being updated, sometimes it can be because there are certain items that they have changed the benchmark in a little more significantly than others. And so schools are used to this. And what we did for all of these years is we tried to hold the benchmarks steady so that we weren't moving the finish line on people. But at some point, you have to adapt to the vendors' benchmarks because you're falling behind all of their, their most current information. So this is the year that we said, all right, going to change to their updated benchmarks. And so we knew that we might see some changes in our data, but that's why we put a break line in the graph so everyone understands that we changed to the new benchmarks. And we all know that's going to change what the data look like a little bit. The other thing that happened this year is that the screening window opened. I don't know that we opened it earlier. Janelle can correct me. But the system was open and are all of our districts screened, actually, the bulk of our districts screened much earlier in the window than they typically would. And what that means is when they screened kids, they had been exposed to less instruction than they typically would have. So if you're screening this year, one or two weeks sooner than you would have in these years, that's one or two weeks less instruction that they had when they took the screener, which also is going to bring their scores down. So we had some differences this year. I mean, we, Janelle dug into that data just a lot to make sure that we knew what was going on. And so before the pandemic came, we anticipated that these would start heading back up again because we knew what we were dealing with. And then this happened. So now what we need to do is get them going the other direction. I hope, I hope that helps explain. If you need any more detail on, on the benchmarks, you know, we have a lot of technical information that we can provide as well.
Thank you.
Amy, is there any reason why, it looks like first grade consistently has kind of been, I think, I, I feel like on the other graph too, it was a lower scoring one. Is there a reason why like kindergarten and then it goes kind of down first grade? Is that, is that normal or is that just, I mean, I was thinking about that so.
So I'm actually going to see if Janelle wants to take that one because I think there's a reason, but I don't remember it.
Yep. I think, you know, we think that the reason for that is because the first graders this fall are the students who were in kindergarten last year. And kindergarten is really a fundamental year for learning the fundamental, you know, reading skills. And those students miss, you know, two or three months of their kindergarten year. And so they miss some of those foundational skills. So we're going to really have to, to focus on the first graders this year and make sure that we're providing them the extra support they need to make up that loss.
And will they be, because it looks, so this, was this assessment given in the fall, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Is it given again this spring to kind of know where they, how much progress they've made or lost or kind of what needs to be done before they start the next school year?
Yes, we will give this again in the winter and the spring. So the winter window will be right after winter break in January and then there will be a spring window in April. So that's one of the great things about the screening assessments is we have that data three times a year so we can track our progress throughout a school year.
One of the interesting things I, I see on this back dating to 15, 16. One of the interesting things I I see on this back dating to fifteen sixteen is the summer learning loss between fall and spring, every grade, every year practically. I mean, you can just track, and then it goes back up. You know, and then between spring and fall, you see a drop again, which, you know, it it, we've been hearing about and something we really do have to continue to figure out how to address also.
Yes, that's exactly right. That's, it's pretty obvious. Okay. So we just wanted to kind of review what our takeaways were from looking at the data. Um, and then Kathy will share with you some of the resources and supports that we're providing to districts and schools this year specifically. So we um, we are glad that schools were able to screen most of their students this fall. That was probably um a big um feat for them. That was a a lot of work and a lot of um screening and in different ways um than they've done in the past. Um, generally, in that graph that we saw, we do see system-wide growth from year to year. Um, like Amy said, it's it's definitely incremental because we have a big system, but we do have some districts and schools who are making tremendous growth. Um, we don't think yet this fall, we didn't see in the data that the learning loss is being, is exacerbating inequities um in achievement gaps. And the learning loss, you know, we're glad that we have this data so that we could see the learning loss, although I think we all knew that it would exist. Um, but we know how we can solve this. And so that's what Kathy will talk about with you in a moment. Um, and then the continuing concerns we have is that that the pandemic did result in learning loss. Um, the other thing that is really important for us to keep track of is uh all of the people at the department and the AEA's are also um suffering from the pandemic and we've had to do things differently and reach out to schools and districts in different ways. And they, of course, have their plates full with things that they have never had their plates full with before. So the pandemic um affects us all the way throughout the system. And then the final concern, of course, is that the achievement gaps continue to exist. So although we didn't see that they were necessarily exacerbated this this fall um by uh not being and having, you know, an extended summer um loss, they definitely still exist in the data and all of you saw that right away and pointed that out. Kathy, I will stop sharing so you can start.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. So as Janelle mentioned, um, uh, we have put, put together some supports and resources and uh, in collaboration with our area education agencies. And as you noticed, um, when we see that less than eighty percent of our students are meeting those benchmarks, that's really an indicator that we have universal instruction work to do, meaning like we have to really think about what we're doing to and how we're teaching um students, all students, right? And we have to think about um, what are those opportunity gaps that some students may have that other students don't have? As those opportunity gaps are different across our student group. So when you're a teacher, um, you're really thinking about that broad range of your students, but also trying to really build in instruction just in time to meet the range of needs of the entire group. And now our range of needs is is different, right? Um, it was um different prior to the pandemic and now it's more enhanced, right? As there's unfinished teaching and unfinished learning. So the unfinished teaching, meaning the things we wanted to teach last spring and maybe that we wanted to teach uh during face-to-face instruction that we're not able to, and then unfinished learning, meaning those opportunity gaps and those uh different type, different, different accessibility issues that our students may have. And so this work that we put together is really meant to address universal instruction and focus on grade level learning with just-in-time supports for that missed learning, that the the instruction and teaching that might have been missed during last spring and maybe still being missed this year as students are on quarantine or on um uh having difficulty accessing instruction for whatever reason. Um, and so this focuses on what teams need to do, what building level teams do, and then really what teachers are doing to engage learners equitably. And it provides some coaching supports as well. So I'm gonna go ahead and kind of walk you through um five steps that we guide buildings to engage in. And then we're gonna take a look at what this looks like for teachers and um to meet the range of their student needs. So when we think about our five steps, we're thinking about um making sure that we have a team put together at our building levels that understand standards, that understands our student needs and that um are gonna lead these accelerating learning efforts. That team then um really has to dig in and understand their students and their student learning um needs, their uh the the things that are impacting their students and their families, looking at their data, looking at their um information they may have collected from families and students and teachers along the way and starting to just assess what's impacting their students and what's interfering with learning. Then setting a vision, goals and a plan for that. And this really means also kind of digging in and learning a little bit. So um, one thing, one thing we've uh put together is um, we have a a set of modules, of learning modules where um teams can begin to learn about these concepts so that they can um get started with the learning. We also have this tool called the T N T P Learning Acceleration Guide, which is kind of a friendly team for leadership, a tool for leadership teams to use to really start to look at um their student uh demographic data, um what's impacting their students and what's impacting teaching and learning so that they can start uh thinking about how to scaffold that learning uh just in time for their students. We built two, two different tools for teams to use, a teacher team tool and a coaching tool. The teacher team tool really helps teachers think about and plan how to engage their students in grade level learning with just-in-time supports and scaffolds for the mislearning that students have based on what their students need. And I'll take a look at, we'll take a look at what that looks like here in just a bit. And then we have some paired coaching tools because we know that teachers learn best when they have supports to be able to do this work too in teacher teams with um, with folks like TLC coaches and um there, there are other types of coaches in their building. Um, and then we have some professional learning resources. I mentioned some modules put together by Unbound Ed as well as some courses that are offered through our A- area education agencies. So what does this look like um for teachers? So it it first starts with um kind of just building an understanding of what we're trying to do. So instead of trying to go back and learn um everything that was uh was done in kindergarten, we're really focusing on, you know, first grade. If we're in first grade, we're focusing on first grade instruction and building in opportunities for kindergarten, for the learning that might have been missed in kindergarten um into this first grade instruction. And and that's a, and that can be done in a variety of different ways. And so the tools help teachers walk through identifying what that learning is, assessing for that learning and then planning for that learning both in their unit, as they're planning their unit, but as they're planning every lesson. So in taking plant, taking stock of the lesson that's upcoming, really determining what each of their students needs, figuring out um how they're going to deliver that. Sometimes that's class-wide. If uh most students need that, that support, it's class-wide. Um, sometimes it's small groups and sometimes it's more intensified instruction for certain students as well. And so we provide some guidance and structure on how to do that. And then also some tools on what those learning steps might look like. Um, those, what that scaffold and instruction uh might look like to support students as well. And so we have teacher tools and coaching tools to help teachers through that um, through that accelerating learning, focusing on on grade level learning with just-in-time supports for um, for the unfinished teaching and learning. So what have these supports look like? Um, we have had uh, we, we push these supports out through our Return to Learn statewide school improvement team, also through our um weekly webinars to the field and to districts. Uh, we, we, we have also engaged in them with our statewide school improvement team and our statewide literacy team as is using them as well. And then um, the modules are live and active and being used and we just have some data on completion data for these modules uh that happened. Um, most of our teachers engage in those modules uh during July and August when um when school was out. And then we've had some also engage in them uh this fall as school's been in as well. Um, and we'll keep, keep looking at that completion date for, that's just for the modules so that we might have had um teachers engage in the tools uh outside of those modules as well. And so I'm gonna pause just for a little bit and see if there's questions and thoughts.
I have a question. Um, what kind of feedback are you getting back from the teachers involved in this process? As I look, as I look at what you're presenting, it looks like a great plan. But if I'm a teacher, I'm thinking, oh, boy, now I have to do something on top of what I put on top of, on top of. How are the teachers actually responding to this? Do you have any anecdotal information?
Well, yeah, and it's really informal. Um, but one of the things that we heard early on is that there was that teachers knew that this was happening, right? Like there was stress coming back in the fall, knowing that students would be behind and what do they do about that? So in some ways, focusing on grade level learning um, is uh, is, is what they were planning on doing anyway, right? But having a plan for how to address that mislearning is is somewhat relieving as well. And the idea of te, of creating like, like um unit plans and lesson plans is really well within a teacher's wheelhouse already. So we feel like the work is kind of complements um a teacher's normal, normal routine already. It's just a different way of thinking about how to plan instruction. Um, and so the feedback we've gotten through our AEA partners who are collaborating with teachers has been really positive. Um, but it's still a big lift, right? Um, now you're planning for even more diversity in your classroom in terms of of what students have accessed and and so it's not that it's not a big lift. Um, and and teachers have a lot on their plates, right? Many are trying to plan virtual instruction at the same time as face-to-face and um, and trying to teach in new ways that they've never taught before. And so that complicates it, as Janelle had mentioned, some of those, those complications as well. Um, but this, this work in um planning instruction based on what the grade level expects and and uh addressing um unfinished learning for whatever reason. And, you know, right now we're, we're addressing it because of a pandemic, but tomorrow it might be something else. And we have students who are always, who always have unfinished learning. And so we, we also feel like this isn't something that is necessarily going to go away. This is a way of teaching and so hopefully um, we can see more engagement in this kind of of um, as in really aligning instruction to student needs and the grade level expectations um through, through strong curriculum materials and and instruction. That's really been our goal from the beginning and it continues to be and it's just exacerbated by this, this pandemic as well.
And I, and I think you're, you're, you're capturing what we're consistently hearing and why this is gonna be a long haul. Because there's so much more than just the academic challenges that are being placed on our kids and our teachers. And that's not gonna quickly re-correct itself. You know, we're not even out of this yet. And so we're trying to, you know, we're trying to focus on this, but there are so many other needs of our students and our staff that this support is gonna be um a, a focus for a long time, along with a lot of difference of support. So it's, it's, as concerning as a lot of this data is, I think there has to be some acknowledgement that this is gonna be what it is for a little bit until we can recover in lots of ways. There are a lot of other needs with these kids and emotional and social emotional supports of our kids and our staff that they're trying to wrap all together. Um, and some kids that aren't even in in school. And so how do you, how do you meet that challenge? So it's, it's uh it, it's, it's gonna be a challenge for everybody for a while. And I think our, our goal and our role is to try and be as supportive as we can be of of everybody's needs right now. And for as long as we can and recognize that we're gonna have to maybe do more and 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 reach out more and give them a longer path for correction.
There's a lot of stress in schools right now, a lot.
And, and you know, and we've heard that from, you know, simple things of trying, you know, we always wanted to ask, well, how are the teachers doing? And right now they don't have time to tell us, you know, we, you know, we need to be mindful, but we're asking of them right now because they're so focused on trying to take care of all these needs of their kids and themselves and each other. So it's gonna look a little different for a while, but we recognize that. And so we just really wanna do what we can um, to support all of it, a- as much as we can.
Yeah, and to give you a little look at what teachers are doing in schools, a, a lot of my teachers are having to deal with students who are in class at the time, students who are quarantined and then students who are completely remote. And if we move hybrid, then they're dealing with students who are in class during the hybrid day, the students who are out of class during their hybrid day, they have quarantined students, and then in addition to that, remote learners. Um, so my students are waking up at five AM every day and not going um to answer their emails for school for remote learners and not going to bed and putting their work away until eleven PM every night. And so they've been trying to relieve that with some like teacher workdays, but teachers are overwhelmed right now. And um, yeah, I really appreciate all the work that they're doing um, to try to get us caught up. But then as far as like working on prioritizing their learning and things like that, it might not be the highest priority at this moment in time. They don't have any time to do any of this.
Thanks, Hannah. Yeah.
Well, not only that, is that they're recovering for other teachers and a few breaks and a few times during the day to escape just for a little solitude for five or 10 minutes.
Betty, did you have a, I thought you started to say something.
Yeah, I did. Thanks. Um, a couple of things. I know that right now this, that, that we've got these immediate needs and it's, it's really crisis level. Um, but, but prior to this, we s, we still weren't meeting benchmarks and and I guess I go back to that, that uh, this just exacerbates that and and we've got a lot of work to do. Question, do you have any data that shows you the difference between kids who enter kindergarten who have been through preschool, have been not preschool and those who haven't? And secondly, how are you working with that pre-K level um in, in order to help prepare students for kindergarten? I mean, I think we keep talking about kindergarten being the foundational uh period. And I would submit that maybe it's earlier than kindergarten.
Yeah, so.
So how are you working with that level?
Yeah, so um, we do have data uh that, and so it's, every few years, we actually look at um, as comprehensive a picture as possible. We typically do this um, with the Child and Family Policy Center. They're always very interested in data on um quality preschool experiences and what that looks like coming into kindergarten and then lasting in the third grade. And so they've done a couple of nice studies on that. Um, and then we also need to do evaluations of our, our statewide preschool program across the state. And so we do have some data on that. Um, I actually can't remember everything about the conclusions, but Jay might remember some of it. Um, so, but we can bring it to the board for sure. Um, the other thing that I would say is you're seeing um kindergarten through third grade data here because we're mandated to collect that for, and so we have all of it and it's not showing you a complete picture. Um, we absolutely include early childhood in this system of looking at early literacy. Um, so they're included on our statewide school improvement team. Um, we, uh, when we do onsite visits or we do like targeted check-ins with districts to find, to make sure that they're um, looking at their action plan, they're having, meeting with their leadership team. Um, we say uh preschool needs to be included in that. How are you planning from preschool to kindergarten entry? That's a major transition time. Um, and all of the research also shows that it does start pork in the garden. So uh, we absolutely, we don't just believe that. That's also part of all of the materials we have created. So we actually have building blocks for um what literacy looks like in preschool and what it looks like in kindergarten and up. Um, and how we bridge the early learning standards to the Iowa Core standards um as kids are moving between the two. So um, we're very much uh in agreement that this is a, this is a critical time and the system and the system starts way before they're ready to come to. So if that's something we need to do as another board workshop, then I think would be a great topic.
Yeah, I do too. And I, it, it sounds like you're doing a lot of work. I appreciate that. And yeah, additional data would be, would be beneficial. What percent of school districts in Iowa have pre-K?
Statewide voluntary. Yeah, I think that we actually only have a couple of districts that do not have it through, have, would still need to actually submit an application. So we're still putting up an application every year just for a couple of districts who haven't done it yet. I don't see any of our early childhood folks on right now, but I can just get you the number, did it today. I'll just reach out to one of them.
I think you're right, Amy. I think it's just two or three.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have many left.
So it is, it is 9:53. Are there any final questions? We wanna, we're scheduled till 9:50. We wanna make sure we have a chance to get a quick break and come back in to start at 10. Any final follow-up or anything you want us to bring back?
I just have one very short thing and I won't take more than 30 seconds. I'm, I'm having a deja vu moment. I, I just finished 10 years on the Dubuque Community Foundation. And we have eight regional found, community foundations in northeast Iowa. Just, just so you know, and maybe you do, for the last six or seven years, grade level learning and third grade reading have been one of the three primary things this, that organization is doing. And I, and I only bring it up if we're looking for resources and that's kind of a philanthropy organization that's doing some of this work in northeast Iowa. And I bet others are in the state as well. Maybe that's a resource we can tap into. You know, obviously you're the experts at this, but that group has developed quite a relationship with local community school districts. And I, I don't know if others have experienced this as well, but boy, if you're not already talking to each other, maybe there's a, an opportunity, is all I'm saying.
I, I just have one question. Do you guys know how many or what percentage of students are enrolled in like pre-K? So when they're four years old or before they go to kindergarten, is that the number you guys can get or just a percentage?
Yeah, it's actually around 68%, I believe. That's based on census data that we have on the number of four-year-olds in the state. So I will look the number up though.
Yeah, for very approximate numbers, I think we generally have about 35,000 students per grade level in kindergarten through 12th grade. And I think we have about 27,000 to 30,000 students in preschool. So maybe 6,000 to 10,000 fewer learners than we have once students get to kindergarten.
And it's not, obviously it's not mandatory or anything that, that they go to pre-K.
Janelle, I have a quick question, just really quick. You know, on the first, the slide where we talked about sort of the slide for some students, if you think about, obviously, and you need a crystal ball for this, I get it, but everything that's going on, like when do you think that we will see the majority of the impacts from, you know, the change in education right now due to the pandemic?
Yeah, I think that is a crystal ball question. I do think though that we will see improvement with the winter screening data. I think we generally, you know, every year we see improvement as we go throughout the school year and students are exposed to instruction and learning. It might be smaller increases than we see in other school years, but I do think that students are gonna benefit from whatever type of instruction they're, they're experiencing this year.
I just have to say, I do, my, my kids are online now, but I, I appreciate, I mean, teachers have gone through a lot to try to make it constructive, engage the kids. I have a child with learning disabilities. I was super concerned. And he's getting along really well. He can interact and ask questions. And it's just a lot better now. Obviously, it was in March because nobody was anticipating it. But I just appreciate the fact that teachers are really working hard to make it engaging so that kids can learn.
Yes, that's very true. Teachers have definitely gone above and beyond across the state as much as possible.
Thank you, Janelle and Brad and Amy and Kathy, it's like round the room. Thank you for round the boxes. I want you guys to work on this and certainly anyone on the board, let us know if you want additional follow-up. We're happy to send any data or resources that you think would be important.
Okay, thank you so much.
We have like three minutes. I just want for them. Or one minute? We have one minute.